I'm finally coming to realize about that.
Just sick of how he keeps coming.
I was stuck in.
He doesn't like my field. I mean, he doesn't like her field.
Yes, we do. I didn't want to do that. I would do that on the other side. I think we might have a lot we got there. I seen it do the package of bits, right? For chicken?
No, no.
Good cats?
The other shoe has boundaries.
And that's weak. But I would like to say that. Midnight is seven. All in the week.
I was thinking of turning the table.
What do you think you really get off?
Yeah, I'm looking at. Because I can't just get a pay sixteen more, sixteen twenty to get off. Oh, yeah. Because I don't. Then I have two nights. Is it that's a lot? It's good on. Yeah, that's it. It's not spicy meal.
The dude.
Yeah.
All in there. The country's been all the way. And then the city of the man. I'm going to come inside. How much? This is. I want you to go. In the morning, we're making that people. That's a lot. So she should probably go. She should be. She's a senior. She's a senior. She's a paid woman. Okay. Yeah. Champion's still standing.
Oh.
Yeah. We've done. Yeah. We're just. We're in half. Yeah. We're just. We're just. We're just. We're just. We're just. We just got for a reason. Uh, we saw. We just. We're listening. I'm ready. I'll go. Everybody did. Yeah, like the other word. Yeah. This is sick. I'm just curious. It's sad. You might as well. Probably, probably. How'd they be telling? Anyway, if you look. Take where.
I can't see too deep, too. I think I'm out here. Here, here. All of the time.
You know, how they need to, you know. I was just curious. No reading days. One of the most scary ones.
I'm sorry.
City. They're gonna sell. So we said. Five percent. Yeah. Congratulations. Yes. We take. Big taxes. What do you think with this? It's a big card adding. That's just. It's a lot of. The roads that move. I got it. I'm probably. I was like a couple. I'm different. I don't know. I was just hearing. Still, they don't tell you. But they don't. See, I see.
Now, we can.
So you want to get in there again? Well, it's not. You're the same. That's it.
Yeah, I hope it's the end of the end of the season. I heard it happen. But she came over. Cool. Um. So she's down. She's not. Thank you.
I'm about. I'm just.
I do. I think it's. Oh.
Yeah, we.
We. So this is all having fun. My. I'm. It goes home. I guess. It's. I will. It was. I think it's funny. Okay. I would. That's. I'm. I'm. I'm.
The little one is complaining.
Hopefully.
It's.
It was. I'm. 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 It's. I'm. 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 I already have. I'm. 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 I'm.
The. The. Go ahead. So. Are you on this? I'm here. Sorry. Why? We. Oh.
Okay. We like. When you're. State that it wasn't. We actually got our ticket.
Do you want to get it? And I just. I. We're. 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 Come on. Stop it. Do you? I hear one of them. That's a good call. Get the kids to go through this. But I can't if they're. Do the game. Yeah. I don't know. We're. I'm. I want to. That's what I do. We're. I'm. Of course, I care. No. I know. Almost done. Yes. Love it. Yeah, but real. How you doing?
Seven o'clock. Loving the regular meeting of the city council, city of Ranses Pass, of January twenty, twenty fourteen, seven P M. Stand up and give the application. Lord, I'd like to give thanks for all the blessings you've given us to allow everybody gathered here to see what happens with our city business. Also, we also pray for all the people that are not feeling well. Please watch God over them and their families because it's always heartache and you take care of your loved ones that's not doing well. Also, please bless all our students that are going back to school tomorrow for today's holiday, Martin Day. Watch out for us, for other kids going back and forth. And God bless their teachers to give them the time to mentor and promote these young minds to be our future leaders. Also, I'd like to give thanks, Lord, just for every day. For, because everybody seems to ask you at all times, but never, nobody ever just says, thank you. Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This will bring us to item number three, the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. If the discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. And. I got one thing I want to add to that. Sylvia, I called you about it earlier. When we do the votes and stuff, I know the mayor is the tiebreaker if it comes to a tie two to two, whatever. But I want to state it, if the mayor votes yea or nay, just to make it public record for anybody that goes back to the years that go by and may have an issue. Everybody vote for it. One mayor may not vote for it. That way, it shows that the mayor is here and being active in the meetings. I don't know if there's any issues with that.
Since it's not a, since it's not a national vote, do you want us to order if the mayor was in support of the item or the mayor was in opposition of the item as opposed to a yea or nay vote? Alan?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
Just as long as it shows you voted.
Yeah. That way, the public record will show that there was a vote cast by everybody. And then also to just add, you know, there'd be some times when we have some abstains, you know. I would like to, me personally, I would like to give a reason why I would abstain because I think the citizens of Ranses should know, you know, other than having a business conflict or something, you know, instead of just saying I don't want to vote. That's just my personal opinion, though. As I said, I'm good.
I make motion that we approve the consent agenda, the consent agenda for January sixth, twenty fourteen.
Second.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Also bring us to item number four. Consider enacting a request of January senders for the use of the shrimpery grounds.
Um, Mayor and Council, in the item before you is a request by Mr. Sendus for shrimpery grounds from two to six o'clock. In the normal course of business, this would normally go through just Public Works in our Parks Department, but this was a rather large request and it would cut off the park from other usage for that particular date, which is why the item is in front of you.
Is there anything scheduled for that date other than this?
No. Mr. Sendus would be responsible for the, any lighting and cleanup costs associated with the grounds.
And in the letter, she stated that.
Yes.
How about insurance?
She has not provided insurance. We've probably not even discussed that with her.
I think that's something we need to look at.
Liability insurance.
Yeah.
We will discuss that.
Also, on the, would the Public Works be setting up the electrical service for her or how would that be?
Yes, we have to. I, I don't believe she's going to need any tremendous amount of lighting, but there is some electrical service to run whatever bouncy houses and things she wants to place on the ground.
Okay.
Yes, they would be setting up.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the request of Mrs. Janie Resendis with the fact that she does provide the insurance, that I provide the insurance on that. And the cost for utilities on it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who seconded, I'm sorry?
Right.
I'm sorry, our city secretary is out ill today.
This will bring us to item number five. Consider enacting approving the creation of the Ranses Pass Building Standards Board, amending the Ranses Pass Code of Ordinances of Chapter Five, Buildings and Construction, Article One, in General Sections five point five through five point nine, by adding the Building Standards Board and appointing members to the Building Standards Board.
Um, Mayor and Council, I would ask that you pass on this item simply because we still have some conflict in existing code that we need to clean up. Um, there's still mention of city inspector and some other conflicts in other sections of the code that need to be stricken.
And I'll bring you to item number six. Consider, we're going to pass on this, T, or?
Yes, sir.
And the reason for us, because we're parity on the lots themselves, but physical addresses, right?
Yes, physical addresses. We, um, the city has a policy of not addressing any lots until there's a structure on it. Um, we're working with the Ranses County and San Patricio County to address, um, all of the vacant lots and things in the building. The, the agenda memo is not clear and so some of those lots are still in question, so some council have expressed concern, so I ask that we pass for further clarification.
I would like to give you a chance to speak.
Uh, yes, sir. Council, uh, my name is Robert Cuevas. I'm a office manager for Linebarger, Goggan, Blair and Sampson. Nancy Voskis and Matthew Brinkman from our firm are also here. Uh, we're prepared to, uh, discuss with you these resale offers today, uh, but if you want to table them, that's, that's fine. That's, that's your choice. So we can come back next time and address these at that time if you'd like. Not a problem.
I know I would like personally to sit down, sit down and go through it myself and then.
Yes, sir.
Questions pop up and I can ask you at the next meeting or.
Yes, sir, we can do that. No problem.
Because I would, I would just like to have the street addresses exactly what streets they're looking at rather than the lot and the block.
We'd have, we'd have to work with them because they're not, uh, they're not.
That's just what I would like. That's just.
So we'll, um, as these come up, we'll have to sit down with Robert and the two counties and make sure that.
Sure.
The correct addresses are given.
Sure, no problem.
One thing Sylvia I'd like to add to that, I think I discussed it before, before, I would like to get a map with all the lots so I can have it in my garage and actually pinpoint this is where we're going.
We're working on it.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
We can, we can duplicate the one that's in my office on the wall.
Oh, yeah, it'll work.
Um, we did, we did, on, on the Building Standards Board, real quick, we did have some applicants who, um, who applied, so we're, uh, since we're tabling the item, it's still open for applicants.
Do we have enough applicants?
Yes.
How many go on that board?
Five.
This brings us to item number seven. Consider enacting approving the items to put the finance department.
Um, Donna, if you want to. You want to say? Okay. Um, our, the city's personnel policy is codified in section, in the municipal code. That policy has not been updated in a very long time, so the policy that is in my office that we've been operating under is not what's in the municipal code. So this action does two things. It codifies what we're currently working off of. And then recently, we amended staff pay dates because the way the paydays were falling, staff was having to estimate hours in order for payroll to be completed. And what was happening is if a staff member or a director submitted hours, a staffer would come and say, oh, I need to take the afternoon off or I can't work tomorrow, et cetera, et cetera. So we were left juggling amending payroll. It became very difficult for finance to, to manage the payroll process. So we moved it to Friday, which gives them three working days of actual submittals, actual hours worked, um, in order to accommodate, so.
I got a question on Part B, the resolution authorized the city manager to allocate funds between line items.
Oh, we're not. Oh. That's, that's going to be Donna's. Yes, sir. Um, item seven B is actually, um, uh, a resolution amending the charter. Right now, any amendments between line items have to come before council. In other municipalities, as long as you don't exceed the bottom line, you can transfer among the same fund. For example, if Public Works had money in their equipment line item that needed it in operations or needed it in something, you could be able to transfer at the director's discretion and city manager's discretion. So Donna, do you want to?
Um, yes. And that becomes particularly useful, like you do with your personal budget. You have an unexpected carpet here that you didn't plan for, but you had extra money in your grocery budget, so you could cut back on your groceries a little to your picture car. We do the same thing in the city when we have things, we have to juggle them from time to time. Or when we were budgeting, we missed an item, but we can take it from somewhere else and pull back. The bottom line always remains the same, and so we wanted to do that. That was what number seven B was about, just to facilitate. And myself and the directors, the authority to shuffle those things so you're not bothered with the day-to-day details of the line items.
And they are appropriated expenses. We would never be allocating funds that the council has not already appropriated. It is within the overall budget.
Does it happen a lot or not a lot?
I think that's happening quite a bit.
Very frequently.
Prices increase on this.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, for a contract amount of what it was last year and they give us a five percent increase, you know, we can cut back on office spots or something like that. So in order just to keep things on a even scale, we do have pretty routine, actually. Um. Can we read together seven? Um, seventeen is a formal budget amendment. Um, we receive several donations, um, that we wanted to account for the revenue so that we could spend it, um, to complete the different things that the dummies anticipated we would. And we've had some unexpected expenses for termite, termite for the library. We, um, we have another staff member in finance. We have done, there are tons of things that need to be done. Um, we are going to cover, um, part of that with a reallocation from the Water and Sewer Fund, which, which contributes to help, you know, further the cost of finance. Um, it would affect the bottom line a little bit. We have some additional revenue, well, not really revenue, but a decrease in expenses. We found that there were a couple of water plants that are actually in our line, we believe were on Eagle Side's line. And for many years, we have been actually paying the Eagle Side for the water. And ours.
Well, huh.
So we have an adjustment coming back on that, um, which will reduce our actual cost of water. So that will help to bring the cost of the additional employee. I think overall, um, sent total to the bottom line, um, was a net, um, expense of nineteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars total.
The additional staffer would, um, help with grants administration, which right now is very difficult. We have a multitude of grants and you see the position that we're in today. But also there is a variety of, of things finance needs to do in terms of contracts, making sure they're in the city secretary's office. They're. She just needs help.
And inventory is a huge one. We don't have a good discount account of what we have on hand and tracking that. And that's something our auditors have mentioned in the past, and we definitely need to get up to speed on that. It's a big item.
Going back to you, see, as far as the water, we were paying water to the city, I think it was like, have we done a thorough?
Yes.
Audit or making sure of what's going on with it?
We, we have checked the lines. Um, it came to my attention, fortunately JP is just awesome in terms of knowing what we've got and what the issues are. He brought it to my attention. We started speaking with him in the side and confirmed that the waters actually are suggested as accounts, but we're very confident the others, unfortunately, clearly are special. And those were paid correctly, but we'll get some.
And there's a termite bid to the library. That's going to be covered by a donation from overbid, so those additional revenues that are in that item have to be accounted for in the amended budget so that, um, they can be expensed. And then item seventeen.
And let's see, Sylvia, that's the equipment for the playgrounds. Which park are we looking at to purchase?
Uh, Community Park. They offered that money for maintenance and repair at Community Park.
And seventeen D is a resolution, um, encouraging our participation in a program called Power Pay Texas. Um, in conjunction with energy production specialists. But this is, is, um, leaving participating in reducing, um, our energy consumption during peak demands where there are typically risk of brownouts or blackouts. Around here, usually in the summer. Or actually, there was one in early January when we had a really, really cold snap and there was a lot of, um, demand at that time for, for energy for heating. The outages are usually fairly short-term, usually thirty minutes to a few hours. What would happen is our, um, city hall haven't worked and my water treatment plant all have generator backup. Um, and what we would do is we would go off electricity and on the generator. And as a result, um, we would get paid. Um, they said that using those three facilities, um, if we go three or four times a year, um, which could be the max, we'd usually be nowhere than four times a year, um, we could earn up to ten thousand dollars. Um, it's not something we have to do. It's strictly voluntary. If there's a time that's completely inconvenient for us, um, when they call for reduction, we don't have to do it. Um, we're not penalized. It doesn't cost us anything. It's just an additional way for us to get some revenue for everything we do. Um, in talking with Sylvia, I also, um, we discussed that we thought it would really be good for emergency planning and training for us, the city, to know that our, our backup systems do work and to be prepared to meet those emergency needs.
I think that's a very good idea.
Bill's going to have an actionable emergency plan by?
Late February.
Yes. We'll be doing dry runs as well, but, but that's one of the items is if city hall were to shut down and we have to go to generator power, we've not historically ran those dry runs. shut down and we have to go to generator power, we've not historically ran those dry runs.
We would not have picked at all the police department, if you just...
Well, it depends. We could, yeah.
No, it does. They are the ones who are remit. They actually test the generators and run their stuff on every month.
That's very good.
And it's just the rest of the harness to do the practice. We need to do it.
But we're getting there.
Yes, we're getting there. We are, we're getting there.
If he pays to, he definitely does. Number E is to adopt the net investment policy for the city. We're required by the Texas Public Funds Investment Act to have an investment policy. It gives us guidelines and rules for how we handle the city. It tells us what we can invest in, what kind of return. It sets standards for what type of risks we're willing to take. We're very conservative always. Our primary goal is preservation of the principal rate of return is always the last thing we worry about. We want affordability, we want safety. But at the same time, we don't want to sit in and not earn any income when we have an opportunity to do it. And there are good, safe investments we can make, and the investment policy will give us the guidelines to do that. It's a test to be reviewed by the council every year. Our, it's not been reviewed in a very, very long time. So, this is a, it's a very active one. I look to the required Public Funds Investment Act training, the right force, a lot of information, and this is resulted that it gives us a model policy, which I think that has been passed specifically. And it's the latest image up to date for our Texas law. And we're very limited by statute of what we can invest in. The state does not allow us to play with the citizens' money in reckless ways.
But we can do more than just, right now, we leave it in tech school and earn very, very little. There is the possibility of splitting some of those investments into different accounts and being able to earn, you know, $100,000 or so a year on the city's investment that gets reinvested into other items. And that was one of the primary purposes for Donna attending the training.
I have a question. Is there, is that just solely based upon what your feelings of, you know, and you and Sylvia, or who else will be involved in deciding we're going to invest here or we're not going to go that route?
Yeah, we would definitely do something, I would do it, and I'm still here. There are some pretty strict limits. As I said, there's not a kind of discretion in terms of whether we think, what we can do. The biggest thing is to do it competitively to get bids, to be sure that if we use the broker, that the broker understands our investment policy and does the recognition of what we're not allowed to do. That we have the proper protections in terms of delivery of securities, things like that, that we're properly controlled by our allies and those types of things.
And you'll see, when, when we do something like that, you'll see the bids, you'll see the proposal, you'll see, and it's, it's not a complete blanket. We're not proposing to do a complete, allow Donna and I to do it because I don't want that much authority, trust me. I don't believe she does either. The, the real focus is obviously protecting the money and letting you guys know what's, what's happening with that money. I don't know if you're aware, but previously, during the prior finance director's tenure here, collateral was changed quite frequently, and often we couldn't make payroll, or we were struggling to move money among funds to make payroll. That was never brought to your attention, ever, ever. So, you'd be surprised to learn we couldn't make payroll some days, wouldn't you? This policy would ensure that, number one, Donna's doing everything she's supposed to do as part of the requirement, and two, when we are moving collateral or removing collateral, adding collateral, that is an action that's not just collective.
You know, I said, you would be getting a quarterly report that tells you what all of our investments are, what the yields are on this, and what changes to the technical factors, what we do, what we do to the city. And I would be happy to set it at a time where anybody wants to come sit with me and talk about it, please help me discuss it in private. Anybody who wants to come up here, if you want.
I guess I still have a question. When you say investments, would you be the one looking into them, or the broker call you, we've got this, the city can invest, or, I mean, because, you know, you've got a job to do here, you know?
It would be a combination of both. And, and you're right, there's a balance between spending so much on worrying about investments because it can be a full-time job versus being smart, you know, to find the economic sort of fashion and yet making a minimum workforce. So, it's kind of a combination of those things without it being a completely full-time job in terms of that. But we would typically contact brokers to let them know, have started an investment firm, start a period of time to see what they offer, and look at things we know are available as well. There's some very good websites that list, you know, different things that we're allowed to invest in, and we can contact us, you know, and tell them we have X amount of dollars to invest for sixty or ninety days, and what you have available, and get competitive bids in that. So, it really doesn't have to be a terrible time to invest.
And I'll give you an example of the type of money we would invest. When the city went out for bonds a few years ago for the water towers, that money's been sitting earning virtually no interest.
Sure.
At that particular point in time, right now, knowing where we are with the 2725, knowing where we are with payment for the repairs, it could be possible for Donna to contact an investment firm and say, "We have $250,000 in FDIC limit to invest for six months and earn three, four times the percentage that we're earning in tech school." So, it's just a way to be smart with the money and let it pay us back.
You can understand my concern, just absolutely.
Absolutely. And that's the other policy.
Won't go into our 401K. It won't go.
We do exactly, everything has to be insured, or there has to be very, very low-risk AAA rated securities, things like that. And we're only allowed to invest in these like, other than subsidies or state papers, things like that. We don't get to go out and buy mutual funds on, you know, this big stock market.
A Ponzi scheme.
Anything like that.
All right. Thank you, Donna.
Any other questions for council? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the items for the finance department.
I second.
On the first, aye?
Aye.
Does bring us to item number nine, eight, which would be considered an act on approving items for the public works department, which is 8DE.
Do you want to chime in, Paul, or do you want me to take this one?
I can do it.
Okay. These are items of, these are actually emergency items that the city has either had to purchase already, and we're now coming back to the council, ensuring that everything is above board. One of them, item 8A is for the JBS pump station. The pumps and the items were in deteriorated condition when we took over the pumps, and so we've had to replace a good portion of the equipment. This is a particular housing unit that goes on the JBS pump station, and we've provided a picture of that pump. Item 8B, backflow prevention for our, the wastewater treatment plants. Ferguson Enterprises and HD Supply are, are the two bidders. And the other, item 8C is odor control for one of the lift stations. Obviously, if you don't, if you don't do that, the people around that lift station will be very unhappy. And this is the sole source item. This is the only vendor we can acquire this particular chemical from, otherwise we'd have to change out some parts and pieces.
Which in turn would add to more parts and pieces.
Yes. Item 8D is the item that we spoke about the other day in terms of being shut off from the Reynolds plant and needing to dispose of our solids at the wastewater treatment plant. That is, that is a rather large expense. It's going to turn out to be approximately sixty, well, forty, $45,000, but by the time you account the per load, it's going to probably be closer to $65,000 from what we've estimated the number of loads that it would take. There are some items at the wastewater treatment plant that we need to address in order for this not to be an issue, and we will be coming to you in the future, in the very near future, addressing some of those items. These are the...
So, on item D, when do you expect to start calling that solid?
We had to start already. We had to start. It was a matter of...
I'm sorry?
Like a big old blow-off or dumpster, like a thirty-yard?
How many loads have we transferred out already?
Not one yet. They put one up right now, so we just got to call that up together.
That's a bunch of sludge ball, or?
It's a few water slugs. There's no water, like a big old cake.
It basically...
We have it covered, so when this transport is not going to get up to Iowa.
When they pick it up, they cover.
They, it goes to tap to become super dirt. And this item is number 10F, but I believe this should be eight. It is Suster Petroleum. Donna, you want to chime in on this one because?
The precious fuel in vault for the city, and we do it approximately four times a year, and it's about $30,000. Because $5,000 is required to support it.
And, uh, do you want to keep track of how many gallons we're putting on each piece of equipment, how many hours we're running?
I don't know about hours we're running, but we do keep track of what department it goes to, and it's been styled among the departments as part of their departmental budget.
Just to keep a run track of?
We could do a better job. We're talking about like a fuel man or something card that says how many miles we're... We don't have anything that sophisticated. It's a, we're on the honor system.
What happened to the one that we used to have there?
It broke, and it's never been repaired.
But we get that one at one time, but you have to work for planks at one time, first of all.
So, when it was there, it's like it's hard to get parts for.
Yeah.
It's like, it's like for this, so it's like taking a part from.
We're, we're currently exploring if Suster Petroleum's the only place we can get gas because, quite honestly, the rate that we're paying right now is not even a rack rate. It is, it's basically what you would pull into stripes and get yourself as a consumer. And with the quantity that we're buying, we should be able to receive a discount. So, one of the things we'll be looking at is there, is there a better provider? We don't currently have a contract of Suster Petroleum that anybody's been able to find.
That's, that's nice.
So, at this particular point, we do owe money, and it's not an item that has ever been approved by council, so.
So, we're going to look for other fuel, like suncoats, or?
Absolutely.
Okay. It is a budgeted expense, just so you know, we're not exceeding budget.
Right.
And those are the items.
I'll make a motion, we approve items for the public works department.
Second. On the first, aye?
Aye.
So, we're going to go to number nine, presentation?
Yes.
Of the 2013 racial protest document report by Mr. Chief Attorney.
Yes, council, thank you. You guys should have a complete report there. I just have a summary here for you. And of the reportable stop last year, we had fifteen hundred seventy-five total stops, of which eighty-six percent of those were stops on white populations within the city limits, eighty percent of the stops were Hispanic, four percent of the stops were black and white children, and the rest of the states were different, in races. Of those, we knew 112 individuals raised before they were stopped last year. We recall, we didn't know anything because we did not collect that stat. This year, we actually collected, and like I said, we knew 112 total, and then twelve hundred seventy-eight. We did have one complaint filed this year that was a racial protest type stop, it was uncalled for, and we were upset, Hispanic, male complaint, and one of the Hispanic officers was standing there, motivated, but even more upset because of the stop. We are in compliance with the state, and we are in compliance with our audience review from the, the auditor. But...
Of course, now we can do it all stops, we have a camera.
Yeah, see, how this works, we're exempt from one of the tiers of reporting, we're reporting every single stop because we have cameras, we have a monitor, we don't have to report everything, we just have to... have to report everything, we just have to report on the side of the law. That's why the arrest numbers kind of don't come out too accurately because the, uh, the officers have a tendency to, they're in arrest, they're individual, they should be taking this.
We have audio, too, is that correct?
Correct. We have, uh, the vehicles have an audio, video, and vice versa. We're trying to see if we can change that because all the wires, the parts that have audio and video, but we believe that the audio systems are greater, are more value in the long run, but I just can't tell you how helpful it's been with complaints like that. Yeah, every vehicle is outdated and, uh, important.
So if someone misses that one complaint, who investigates that complaint?
The complaint came in immediately to the patrol sergeant, and he, he started the investigation because it was racially stated, policy requires that being brought directly to my attention. He performed his investigation and then submitted his findings, and I agree that as well. I also is against it, uh, in that with the complaint from what we discussed as well. It was not race motivated, but because that came up during, uh, his complaint, the sergeant had to document it as a...
So it's something that acted on immediately, as soon as, as soon as possible?
Turn around, turn around, that complaint was popped over there on three days. And also to note, too, anytime an officer complains on, with our air management system that includes a video changes of attention period as well, in the event that the vehicle is using a city afterwards, we want to make sure we have that.
We have a qualified instructor to do the profile.
Training?
Yeah, everybody's been through it.
Yeah, the, the training, yes, everybody's been through that training, either their initial through the academy, or they have to go through the understanding for it. We just recycled, um, as of September, I believe. So the cycle starts over now, and anybody who's required is still looking for that training.
Did they just have to go through it one time, or is that a yearly?
It has been a yearly thing, you have to go through the core requirements and sustaining your license, but, uh, I'm not sure if the rules have changed once. Some of the department training was to enhance your license, you don't have to repeat that training. This one needs to be one that you would have to do.
Do you have a discretion on there whether you want to send the, your police officers to that, any type of training?
That's right.
Okay. Like, for instance, if this is not required, the racial profiling, if this is not required training, but you feel like, think it's something, case, there's been some changes to send my officers through, do you still have that?
Sure. Now, anytime there's changes on the policy, they're notified, the policy changes, especially, you know, the law changes, they benefit twice at least a year by policy, and they don't ask that of people that...
Okay.
To make sure that we stand on top of it, they give the patients that shows the changes and as part of the policy training that we do, you know, we have suspended policy training, without a system to manage the training, but during that process, we're not getting that policy training back. And all staff receives about three, stay recognized hours of training or policy. And this would be...
Thank you.
I got a question, Eric. You or your assistant, she, you have to keep track of everybody's hours, and she's coming up, because I know you don't send everybody at once.
Correct. It, it's actually stated based on management, is it?
Okay.
And we have policy that helps us train everybody around the area this year as opposed to years prior. Our staff, they stay as well trained as we.
To bring this to item number ten, Consider An Act on Calling An Approved Order of the General Election for the City of Aransas Pass to elect Councilmember Place Two and Councilmember Place Four.
I noticed that on the Spanish version, we still have Tommy Knight as the mayor.
We profiled him.
We won't worry.
Do I hear a motion for item ten?
I make a motion that we approve an order of the General Election of the City of Aransas Pass to elect Councilmember Place Two and Councilmember Place Four, and May tenth, twenty fourteen.
Okay. On the first day, aye? Now, bring this title number eleven, Consider An Act on Calling An Special Election for the City of Aransas Pass, proposition whether the Aransas Pass Prime Boarding and Prevention District should be continued and the Prevention District sales and the use of tax should be continued also. Does this have to be renewed every sort of so many years?
Ten years.
Ten years?
Yeah, after this, it'd be like every ten years. Well, I make a motion to, for the calling of a special election for the City of Aransas Pass, proposition whether the Aransas Pass Prime Control and Prevention District for May tenth, twenty fourteen.
I second.
On the first day, aye?
Aye.
Now, that brings title number twelve, or City Manager update, Scotty?
Um, Mayor and Council, we have, uh, Linebarger here who is going to give you an update on municipal court collections. Um, the Linebarger, uh, contract was up. Um, we sent Linebarger notice so that we could discuss modified collection procedures with, um, Linebarger. And Nancy and Eric met with both and met with, uh, the municipal court judge on the current process, the proposed process, what the city wants to see in terms of increased revenue collections and our fees. Um, and Nancy's prepared to give you a presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. My name is Nancy Voscos. I'm an attorney and partner with the firm of Linebarger, Gogganblair, Sampson. Along with me is Robert Quevis and Matthew Rinkman, and Matthew is the, uh, manager that's assigned to your fees and fines. We have tonight to report to you a delinquent court fees and fines collection report. And again, thank you for the opportunity, for allowing us to be on, on tonight. For the past thirty-five years, our firm has specialized in delinquent tax government receivables. Currently, our firm of over eleven hundred employees, experienced collection professionals, represent more than two thousand two hundred governmental entities and collects delinquent court fees and fines for more than a hundred and seventy Texas courts, of which, uh, there are more than a hundred which are municipal courts. We have, in the past, uh, three years, uh, we've helped and worked closely with the municipal court and helped the city to collect more than three hundred and fifty thousand in delinquent court fees and fines. And again, we stand ready to deliver, uh, the same exceptional level of professional, dependable, and reliable collection services. And at any time, we welcome any sort of suggestions, and we would also make suggestions to the client, to you all, on how we can increase our collection rate. At any time, um, I'm available, you may call me. I think each of you have my office number and my cellphone number. And again, we appreciate the opportunity to serve the City of Aransas Pass in both delinquent, uh, delorm taxes and fees and fines. And as a side note, the City of Aransas Pass was one of the firm's first clients. In fact, I believe it was Del Linebarger's first client. So the City of Aransas Pass is very, very important to us, as are other clients as well, but, um, we, you know, want to continue the, uh, continue service, uh, providing a service for you all, and we greatly appreciate having our contract for fees and fines renewed. If you go past the cover letter, we have the court fees and fines collection, and again, it gives, uh, some of the newer council members, uh, gives background about our firm, that we have, uh, thirty-eight years experience in collecting delinquent government receivables. We have more than forty, forty offices located throughout the United States. We customize collection programs to address unique needs of each individual client, and we, um, annually file thousands of lawsuits and mail demand letters on a regular basis to make, uh, collection effective. If you turn to the next page, page two and three, it gives you more information about our firm, um, some of them about other collection services that our firm provides to other clients that we were, been nationally recognized. It has our, um, Martin Del Hubble rating there as, as also, um, we are also rated A-plus by the Better Business Bureau. If you turn to page four, it actually talks about the fees and fines collection program that is in place for the city and how we go about, uh, receiving that information, confirming that information, and working to collect all of that. On page six, you have the flow chart of exactly each step that we take, um, with our IT department in trying to affect the collection through mailings and our call center. Our call centers, uh, they work, uh, Monday through Friday and in the, on the weeknights and on Saturday as well. If you turn to page ten, back in June two thousand and three, the Texas governor signed Senate Bill, uh, seven eighty-two, that went to effect immediately, which allowed county and municipal courts to assess a collection fee that is passed on to the defendants for all adjudicated cases and unadjudicated cases that occurred after June eighteenth, two thousand and three. The new language of the bill allows for a flat fee of thirty percent to be added to outsource collection efforts to meet that criteria. The fee applies to all cases that are sixty days past due from the date of summons, appearance date, judgment date, as notified or ordered by the court. Prior to enforcing the thirty-day, excuse me, prior to enforcing the thirty percent add-on fee to the defendant, the city or county, and the city or, and county, or county, excuse me, must authorize that additional fee, and that has already been done back when, uh, the contract, uh, was first initiated on March, uh, first, two thousand and eleven. The collection fee does not apply to cases where it has been dismissed by the court of competent jurisdiction or to any amount that has been satisfied through time served credit or community service. The collection fee may be applied to any balance remaining after a partial credit for time served or community service if the balance is more than sixty days old. So as the contract stands right now, it is virtually cost-free to the city, other than the ones that the law does not allow the passage of the thirty percent add-on fee, which was, uh, cases that occurred prior to June eighteen, two thousand and three. And in our report, um, the data shows that we collected approximately a hundred and sixty cases, of which the client, which the city has paid us whatever the thirty percent add-on fee. And, um, talking to my boss, Paul Choppa, who's the managing partner in our Corpus Christi office, and he's also an owner of the, of the firm, and, um, he has authorized me to express to the city, uh, should the city wish to renew our delinquent fees and fines, uh, contract, we would go ahead on those cases not to collect an add-on fee from the city, so then it would, it would actually be cost-free to the city, like the delinquent avalorum. As you know, in those cases, the delinquent taxpayer pays our fee, and on these cases, it's passed on to the defendant, except for prior to that year before the law enacted that. And, and again, my boss did allow me to, um, authorize, to let you know that we would do that for free for the City of Aransas Pass. If you go to the, um, Texas Court Client List, that lists every client that we represent for the collection of court fees and fines. And again, there's, um, a hundred and, over a hundred and seventy, of which a hun, of which more than a hundred are municipal courts. If you go past to the sample letters, these are letters that are currently being used at our, at the IG Department for the City of Aransas Pass. We have other, other samples that we can meet with your new county, your new municipal judge, and he can decide for which ones, if he wants to pick any sort of different ones. We can certainly, um, share what we have, our samples, and he can go ahead and choose which ones he would like. If you go to the charts, the Aransas Pass Municipal Court Fees and Fines Recovery Rates, this is through June two thousand and eleven, um, June two thousand and eleven through December two thousand and thirteen. During this time, we've recovered on behalf of the city, um, the recovery rate in dollars over three hundred and fifty-three thousand, which was fifteen percent, and then the recovery rate for accounts, those were, that was one thousand seven hundred and fifty accounts that were paid, twenty-two point five percent, which, that does not include any, um, cases that were done by non-cash resolutions such as community service, things of that nature. And in, and in saying this, June two thousand and eleven... And in, in saying this, June two thousand and eleven, I do want to acknowledge, uh, Donna Cox. She was a municipal judge at the time when this contract came up. And let me tell you, it, the contract was signed on March the first. We started collections on June the first because we had to install the collection module, which our firm invested into the encode. But Donna and her staff did a tremendous job in being very efficient and getting that data to us. And we were able to start collecting on June the first. I was talking to Matthew, and he, there was other clients that we have that the upstart in trying to get this program done for the city takes a lot longer than that. And she and her staff did an awesome job in being very efficient and turning those over because, I mean, when we saw how, how quick it was, we have other clients that there are still trying to struggle because they're verifying what they had on the books, and sometimes it takes a lot longer, perhaps six months to a year. But Donna and her staff were very efficient in getting that information over to us. And looking to their Aransas Pass municipal court fees and fines dollars collected by placement year. This is two thousand and seven and prior through December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. As you can see, we collected over two hundred and five thousand dollars, which was fifty-eight percent of the, of the dollars collected that were from two thousand and seven prior year offenses. And the two thousand and eight, it was third, over thirty-six thousand dollars, which represented ten percent. Two thousand and nine, thirty-four thousand, which represented ten percent. Two thousand and ten was thirty-three thousand, five hundred and forty was ten percent. Two thousand and eleven was nineteen thousand, three hundred dollars, which represented five percent. The two thousand and twelve year placement was twenty-three dollar, twenty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which was seven percent of the roll. And the two thousand and thirteen was a hun, one thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And actually, we just put it as zero percent because it didn't round up to be a one. So, that's why it lists actually zero. If you look to the municipal court fees and fines collection by year, again, if that first column, two thousand and eleven, it says collections began six, one, two thousand and eleven. For that time period, we collected on your behalf, um, over eighty thousand dollars. Two thousand and twelve was a hundred and thirty thousand. And two thousand and thirteen, it was over a hundred and forty-eight thousand. And if you, uh, add this, the, the collections by year as opposed to the, um, the green chart of the two fifty-three, four seventy-seven, there's a variance in the report of seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. So, there's a little bit of a difference because we're running two different reports. And since it's time-sensitive, um, some of the money is not going to be on one report, but that's the way we lay it out by calendar year, and also by the recovery rate. And again, I, we greatly appreciate the opportunity to serve the city, and we want to continue to serve the city in, in delinquent fees and fines. Um, Matthew is here, and I'm going to introduce him to the judge. They've spoken to, on the phone, um, in the past before. And again, we are open to any suggestions that the city has. And I, um, in looking at the data reports, you know, we will do whatever it takes. And again, we don't make any money unless we collect. So, we want to do the best job we can for the city because if we don't collect any money, our firm doesn't make any money. Are there any questions?
I have a question. You said your boss's name?
Paul Choppa. No, yeah, I don't, I don't believe so. I'm not sure. I, I asked him. I asked him last week, and, and he said he was not familiar. But, yeah, but, uh, he is, he's our. He's a good man, let me tell you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you do.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
The contract for Linebarger will be on the February third agenda. And, um, after talking to Nancy and Robert, the, um, initial discussion for this contract, I think Judge, uh, the prior judge, Donna, um, was not involved in the first discussion of the contract. So, Donna and Ron have put new processes into place to make sure we collect, utilizing the warrant officer, utilizing daily court. Ron's speaking up at the phone. So, ensuring those are incorporated into the contract, and we're all on the same page. Um, and they have, again, graciously offered to work, um, toward that end. So, I don't see any issue with putting the contract before the council on the February third agenda. And since they have agreed to eat prior year's expenses, that's even better.
So, we'll be on the agenda for February?
February? Yes.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to the solid waste.
Uh, yes, the, um, as the council is aware, we went out for RFP for solid waste services. Um, we received three very competitive bids, um, each overall saving the city of about two hundred thousand dollars. Um, our current provider surfaced with notice from legal counsel that we did not provide, um, correct notice of the contract. Um, we have our.